10 o'clock and call the mayor to order. Will you stand for the pledge of allegiance?
One thing, everybody, before we say the pledge of allegiance. On this Veterans Day, I ask that when you say the pledge of allegiance, remember all the sacrifices made since we were Americans, aren't we? That our soldiers, our families, and everybody made to make this country wins today. So make the pledge of allegiance very important today as it always should.
Thank you, sir. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call please.
Mr. Brooks?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Carl?
Present.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. D. Francesco?
Present, here.
Mr. Goulik?
Here.
Mr. Johnston?
Here.
Mr. Lynch?
Yeah.
Mr. Valeski?
Here.
Okay, we have a call. Next items, approval of the minutes.
Recommend approval of the attached board meeting minutes from October 11 and 14.
Sub move.
Second.
We have a motion on second. Hold us in favor to approve the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved.
We have two presentations this evening, Patty, let's go do the 339 Plan first?
Nope. Okay, we're gonna do the ARP SRS Plan. Give me one moment and I will put these up on the website after the meeting. So wanted to take an opportunity to tell folks how we plan on spending some of our federal money for the COVID learning laws. And just give you a heads up on what we're doing with the program of studies as well as where we are with our health and safety plan. So just to kind of go through this real quick for you. You know, we've had our health and safety plan. It really hasn't changed a whole heck of a lot since the beginning of the school year. We plan on having it continue as written. We have to review that twice a year. So I may count this as our review and may actually get it due in December. Depending on what happens with masks, as those are the biggest questions right now with current litigation. Just wanted to review, you know, a lot of people forget this, but last year, we were pretty much in person most of the school year for a large population of our students, both K-3 and special populations, all but I think 14 days, which is quite remarkable considering. We were in the top 20% in the state in the most in-person days last school year. So we did a heck of a job and our teachers and our staff have done a great job and sometimes we forget that with where we are right now. Right now, as things still continue to change with the pandemic and recently we've had a lot of high tests, high positive test cases in Crawford County. The school district's still doing relatively well as far as our cases and our contact tracing. Those numbers are shared weekly, every Friday, via our school website as well as the district Facebook page. So I just want to make sure that everyone kind of knows that this is still, we're still conscious during this through the pandemic and we continue to be vigilant. And again, as we don't know what's gonna happen next year, just please understand that the district, if we don't talk about it every day, we are still trying to be proactive and very adaptable. And I do want Ms. Feely to come up if she can talk about some of our ARP SRS funding.
Sure, so as you're aware, we have received several ARP SRS and SRS 1, 2. ARP SRS are homeless grants over the course of the last two years. That funding has allowed us to provide or plan for, in some cases, a lot of opportunities for our students and families. The SRS 2 was $3.1 million. We have until September 2023 to expend those funds. There are some certain stipulations as to how you spend it, what you spend it on, and you can see from the list there that the targets are learning loss, some textbooks, digital access licenses, equipment, summer and after-school programs, as well as some food distribution for those students that are attending those programs. ARP SRS 3 is the $6.3 million one. That will include some staff members, administrative position in our PCA. Again, there's after-school and summer programming involved with math resources. We added Math 180 as an intervention for our students. We have credit recovery opportunities for students who are behind in their credits. And then our last one, which is, well, we think it's our last one. The SRS Stat aside, which is $492,000. That goes through September of 2024. It's targeted, as you can see, they tell us the pots that we have to spend the money in. We have after-school, summer school, and learning loss. Within that learning loss, there are social, emotional, and learning needs that we have to address as well as reading intervention. In addition to those funds, we have our Title I funds. Our Title I funds pay mostly for our teachers and two aides in our district, and at least a little leftover for supplies and parent involvement. Our 2A funds, Pancreast chooses to use that to fund two teachers for class size reduction. And our Title 4A funds, which have to be used in the areas of well-rounded students, safe and healthy, and technology use. You can see the things we fund with that. These programs are very important to our students and families. We're able to offer the SAT and AP classes for our students and the tests, we pay for those, the families don't have to pay for them, and that comes out of this funding. Our learning loss is our focus for the 21-22 school year. We're gonna look at that for second semester, it takes some time to get that up and running. We will offer interventions for students that have been identified to have a learning loss through, since pre-COVID to current situation. And we'll look at the mid-year start data to make that determination of who qualifies for that intervention or who is offered that intervention. We will also offer transportation and food during that time. We will offer a six-week extensive summer program for K-12. Again, it'll be three days a week, for three to four hours per day, we're still in the planning stages of that. Again, the program will be for ELA, math, and mental health. We'll offer credit recovery at that time for other students in other areas, and we will use our spring data, again, to target the students that would be included and invited to that. Transportation and food will also be included. We will continue in '22, '23, and '23, '24 to offer those same programs until the grant money has been expended, and we have to be finished by September 30 of 2024.
So just, Ken's gonna talk real briefly about the program of studies where we're gonna be in the spring. So that's our goal and how we plan to combat the learning loss that has occurred over the past year and a half. Ken, you wanna talk briefly through these two, three slides for me?
Yeah, so we've been reviewing, started the review for our K-12 math program. We started that last year at the end of the year with our last in-service day with teachers. And currently, we've had teachers come in and have presentations from both two of the top vendors that meet the standard for the Common Core math, which, as we know, our program in math has struggled prior to the years I was here and continued to struggle through the pandemic as well. So they're in the process of, they have the sample materials in front of them. We'll be putting out a staff feedback to everybody that teaches math, to drive feedback to us, just like we did with ELA program. And the goal is, after looking at all that for the core program, to bring something here to you, to the board in January, February, probably the February meeting, to request that as the new math resource going forward. At the same time, the business and computer information technology, tech ed group of folks are looking at their programs. You know, times change and these programs, we haven't changed much over the years. They're looking to try and bring things a little more modern, looking at their programs, resources that they have, and they're doing the same type of process that the math and ELA folks have done to hopefully have something for the board in March for approval for our business, computer, and tech areas.
Thanks. Board, have any questions? I know that was kind of quick, we just wanted to give you an update. All right, there'll be more information obviously about those programs in the future. We just have spent some time and we have worked on those this past spring. I was at the Pancreast Advisory Council meeting, wrong button, I apologize. And I was very impressed with the work that our guidance counselors and Mrs. Feely have done with the help obviously of our teachers to talk about our Act 339 Plan. And I'll put these up for public consumption on the website, but I felt that it was worthy of running through because we have had so many conversations with this board about college and career ready, workforce ready, and that's what our 339 Plan deals with. So I'm gonna ask Patty to go through the slides and I'll click relatively quickly. Consider my questions.
Sure, our six counselors worked very hard to put together this presentation. You know, the career, college and career readiness is just one piece of what their responsibility is in a school. They also have to work on personal, social issues and academic as well, but they have really devoted a lot of time, energy, and effort to creating a comprehensive career and college plan for our students in Pancreast. The plan at the elementary level this year, we have a lot of activities and opportunities for students, including the Ag Encounter, which we completed for fifth grade here in October. They visit the current tech center, and the current tech center visits our schools in fifth grade, sixth grade goes to the current tech centers. We have a Biz Town, which you'll hear more about a little bit later. We send our fifth graders to Biz Town. We have a social, emotional curriculum called, or I'm sorry, a career readiness curriculum called Sparks in the elementary K-2, and we do it Zello in 3 through 6, actually we do it 3 through 12. And they create career portfolios. So as the students are progressing through these lessons, they create artifacts for careers that they're interested in, questions that they have, and it helps them to explore and develop as they grow and change in what they're looking for post-high school. There's an example of a Sparky lesson that if you click on, you're welcome to watch at your leisure. And we set goals every year, and our 21-22 goals for career and workforce recommendations are here. And we use, the big wins come from our Zello program, and as you can see, this is a summary sheet. So it takes all the data from our 3 through 6 graders and gives you an example of how many lessons they've had, what the most popular career choices and clusters are, how many colleges, those top colleges that were saved by students are listed there, as well as the careers. Now mind you, these are grades 3 through 5, so those careers are impacted a little bit by that. You can see some samples of what the Zello looks like in the career cruising. This is a video of Biz Town. We had the opportunity, two years ago, it was partially funded by United Way and our Title 4 funds, we were able to send fifth graders to Biz Town. It is a facility in Pittsburgh that has a town set up within a large structure, and the fifth graders dress up, they go down, and they go to work for the day. It's a full immersion program for students. They interview prior to going down. There's some classroom lessons that go with it, they interview for the positions that they want, when they're in the business. There's everything from radio stations to banks, to grocery stores, to STEM-type activities, and they are anything from a CEO to a cashier to a custodian. All of the positions are filled, they get paid for those positions, and at the end of the day, they can cash their paycheck in, in the store that's there. So they kind of see that, how that process works. It's an excellent opportunity for them and they get a lot out of it in that pool immersion. Our secondary folks during 21-22, we've increased in our cyber academy. We also have the PSAT offered, which we pay for our students to take in 10th and 11th grade. Our ninth graders go to the current tech center tours. And we offer a financial aid night, which is very beneficial to our families who have students who are pursuing the college application process. For 21-22, we also see our AP numbers, our students are taking more AP courses, also taking more tests at the end of the year. We have more students using dual enrollment and taking advantage of getting those college credits. We're giving the ASVABs, we're almost finished with one school left, and college fairs. Sagertown has had their college fair and the other two buildings are planning theirs, and there's just some pictures from that. Our counselors created Google classrooms so that students can access the guidance department just like they access their classroom content. They meet with the students in 11th and 12th grade directly, and they also have military recruiters coming in and admissions counselors, they can set up those for students. And there's just some examples of what the secondary platform looks like in Zello, it's a little different, a little more grown up. And their program goals, which, as you can see, they've already started to complete some of those pieces in those schools already in the first quarter. Some pictures from the current tech center, and that's just a review of what we talked about, MRS. Any questions?
Thank you. That's awesome. I appreciate you going quickly through the slides, Patty, but thoroughly. Now we got back on track here, I apologize. Public address? Yes, there it is. I believe we do have a student delegate from Sagertown.
Good evening, my name is Brenna McRae from the Panther Press, and I'm here to update you on what's happening at Sagertown High School. Senior Paige Poehler placed 21st at the PIAA Cross Country Championship on November 6 in Hershey to win a medal. She's the first female to medal in program history. In addition, at the cross-country banquet on November 9, Coach Bill Hetrick was recognized for completing his 20th season as head coach. Congratulations Paige and Coach Hetrick. For Veterans Day today, Principal Tom Baker shared the history of Veterans Day through the announcements and the students observed a moment of silence. We hope to return to the traditional assembly next year. Thank you to all who have served. Students in Mr. George N. Hayes' manufacturing and robotic classes attended 2021 Manufacturing Day at the Bayfront Convention Center on October 13. From the guidance office, all juniors took the ASVAB on Tuesday, November 9, and all sophomores and interested juniors completed the PSAT on October 13. Results for the PSAT will be available in December. The ASVAB results will be available to students on November 23, when students will do the results session with the ASVAB coordinator. The PBIS program continues at SHS as Sagertown maintains Tier 1 status. We've renamed our PBIS initiative as PAWS, Positive Attitude Winning Sagertown. One goal of the team is to create more school spirit amongst the student population with a year-long grade-level challenge for our Panther Cup, filled with activities and events where the grade levels compete against each other. The current cup standings have the seniors in the lead. All fall sports have concluded. The first official date for winter sports practices is November 19. The junior high football team is undefeated with a 7-0 record. Congratulations to Coach Nick Copeland and the players. Panther Press journalists competed in the PA School Press Association Regional Competition on November 5. Winners will be announced in January and will hopefully travel to Penn State in March for the state finals. The first print issue of the Panther Press will be released on November 23. You will receive your copy at the December board meeting. Thank you for your time. Follow us at PantherPressSHS on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram.
Thank you, Brenna.
Thank you.
We have three, two registered citizens tonight.
Good evening. I initially want to thank all of you for your service to this community and for the sacrifices that you make to serve. I especially want to thank Bob Johnston for overseeing the vote tech. I personally have a senior studying commercial art and doors are opening for her as a result of the excellent instruction given. Now as for the issue of CRT and the vocabulary chosen and the current policy being considered, I am advocating for words that are clear as to what the enemy worldview is. See our critical race theory, Black Lives Matter, and the 1619 Project. I don't agree with our present solicitor and call for a review by an alternate board chosen solicitor. CRT is an enemy worldview. It directly opposes the Christian worldview that our country was founded upon and many veterans die for. CRT takes a piece of God's truth, being that racism is wrong, that we should examine ourselves to be sure we are not elevating ourselves above another, and twist these truths while adding numerous destructive elements. Because CRT and Christianity are incompatible worldviews, they will compete with one another for preeminence. Because they are built on two different foundations, one will eventually beat out the other. A few examples would be, the Bible doesn't limit the sins of partiality, hatred, injustice, or bearing false witness to those in power, thus making the definition of racism as prejudice with power incompatible with the Bible's teaching. We know that anyone in any position can have those attributes of hatred and injustice, not just the powerful. The Bible explicitly forbids mob rule and deference to the poor, as in Exodus 23, 2 through 3. The Bible categorizes all of humanity with the default state of being sinful. Therefore, one group of people, whites, are not born more guilty than racial minorities, and racial minorities are not born more innocent than whites. White people are not born guilty of the sins of past generations who happen to have the same skin color. Each man will get an account for his own sin, in Deuteronomy 24:16. The Bible forbids evil suspicions in 1 Timothy 6, 3 through 5, making CRT's inherent suspicions about white people sinful. CRT addresses the wrong problem, and thus will never end racism. Concepts such as CRT will ultimately fail to attain the future it desires, leaving great destruction in its wake. The question is, are you willing to be a part of that destruction? Naming, critical race theory, Black Lives Matter, and the 1619 Project. So I ask you to do that in our policies so that there is no confusion as to who the enemy is attempting to indoctrinate our district's children. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'm gonna continue with the agenda. I'd like to do a consent agenda for the two items under that athletic committee. Recommend approval of the coaches and the five-year agreement with the Randolph Township for the baseball facility.
Do we have a motion? On behalf of the committee, I'd like to move.
One second.
Second. We have a motion on second. And the questions, comments? If not, proceed with the voting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any objections? Motion approved.
Thank you, Mr. Goulik. Education Committee, Mr. Brown, chairman, I'd like to do a consent agenda on items A through C, Policy 109 Resources, the Savis Elevate Curriculum Materials, as well as the approval to apply for the Hershey Heartwarming Project Action Grant.
See, that's retyped fast. On behalf of the committee, sub move.
Second.
We have a motion on second. Questions, comments? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Facilities and Transportation Committees, Mr. Johnston, chairman. Item A, just some information, just again, we passed that information along at the work session. Item B is recommend approval of Amendment 1 of the GISA project with McCord.
Committee, make that recommendation. Second. We have a motion on second. And the questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Item C, recommend approval of the attached contract addendum in driver incentive program with PM Bus.
Committee, make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion on second. Any questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Item D, recommend approval of the listed contract student transportation drivers.
Committee, make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion on second. Any questions, comments?
I think just one comment, if anybody out there is bored and like to learn to drive school bus, this is a perfect opportunity. We'd love to have you.
Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No objections? Motion approved.
Item E, recommend approval of the attached parent-provided transportation agreement for student A.
Committee, make that recommendation. We have a motion on second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No objections? Motion approved.
Finance Committee, Ms. Carl, chairman. Item A, recommend approval of the attached treasures report.
Second. We have a motion on second. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No objections? No objections? Motion's approved.
Item B, recommend approval of the attached dispersments.
Second.
We have a motion on second. Any questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No objections? No objections? Motion's approved.
Item C, recommend approval of the attached NVEA agreement to prepare the 1095C ACA reporting documents.
Second. We have a motion on second. Comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No objections? No objections? Motion's approved.
Item B, recommend approval of the following student activity clubs.
Second.
Questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No objections? Motion's approved.
Item E, recommend approval for Melinda Berno to attend PD 2022 Data Summit Conference in Hershey, PA, March 21 through 23.
Second. We have a motion on second. Discussion?
I just want to make a comment.
Comments?
I just wanted to make a comment on this, that I will be voting yes on this. I voiced my disapproval for it Monday. I still not in approval of what they're teaching, of things that may be taught at this conference, but I believe there's, there are some good things that could come from this at the same time, and has, has to do with like state reporting and stuff that could be very important. So because of those reasons, I will vote yes on this.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any objections? No objections? Motion's approved.
I'd like to do, Personnel Committee, Ms. Davis, chairman, I'd like to do a consent agenda on items A through I. I would like to point out that one of the items that the board is approving is an increase in substitute wages to make us competitive regionally and move some of those up to what we believe are now new market basket prices for hourly employees and also for daily rates for nurses and teachers. So again, I would like to make a consent agenda, items A through I.
We have a motion? On second. Any questions? Discussions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No objection? So no objection? Motion's approved. Motion's.
Policy Committee, Mr. Valeski, chairman. Item A, recommend approval of the following policies. 06, meetings. 119, current events and controversial issues. 236.1, threat assessment. 333, professional development. 816, social media. 903, public participation in board meetings.
I'll pass this off to my colleagues since I'm not in favor of all of them.
Sub move.
Okay.
We have a motion on second. Discussion?
I just want to voice. I just want to voice again on Policy 119, it does not do the job that we set out to do, it does not ban critical race theory. It has good elements to it, most of these elements are already in other policies, and they're good things, but we're missing one of the fundamental things of critical race theory, and that is banning the teaching that our founding fathers or that our nation is built on racism, or that is systemically racist. These are untrue theories that should not be allowed to be taught in the classroom, and until that is included in here, I will not be in favor.
If I could, I would just like to point out that Mr. Valeski is the chairman of the Policy Committee. He, he moved this forward for first reading, and then as soon as it got here, he suddenly didn't like it. For whatever reason, I don't know, but I'm going to say going forward, he's going to have to work on his credibility.
I guess I have to question you ten additional... Yeah, I have a question. If you're against it, I'm okay with that, but why are we looking at it?
I voiced my, at the Policy Committee meeting, I even talked to the Celestia Miss George at the time.
Sure, but why is it, why is it here?
I said that I did not approve of it, that I said that I was not in favor until we could introduce those things into it.
No, at that meeting, you did not, you, as the chairman, you could have held it back, but you sent it through for first reading.
I actually...
Don't, don't change your story now.
All right, look, look, you know, if not, then we shouldn't be discussing it with each other, so...
No, but at the...
State of your opinion.
At last meeting, you didn't say anything about that, so, I mean, I'm all right with removing it, but I wish we would have put it, took it off first reading before we did that, so we didn't look like this.
Any other opinions, comments? If not, let's have a roll call.
Mr. Brooks?
No.
Mr. Brown?
Wait a minute.
Yeah. I know we're voting, this is on all of them.
Yes.
So, we should have pulled out 119.
Yeah, I was going to say, yeah, sorry.
Yeah, it's probably too late since we started the vote. I don't know if we're Roberts or if we're the other one, but it's...
Yeah, I mean...
After I vote, is probably the worst time to say that we're doing what's wrong.
Yeah, because I'd like to pass...
I'd like to pass the rest of it, which is not the one that shouldn't ever come out of committee.
What, what I can do is, we can vote on each policy individually?
Yes.
Okay, let's do that. All right, we'll make a note, since they're already on the agenda, we've been advanced notice that we're going to vote on them, what we're doing is changing the structure of the meeting, so, and we'll reflect the policy minutes to vote on each policy as one, as A, B, C, D, E, and so forth, okay? So, I'll make a note as well, so when we do the minutes, that we're okay. So, we'll go alphabetically, chronologically. So, recommend approval of Policy 006, Meetings.
On behalf of the committee, I make that recommendation.
Second. Do we have a motion? In a second, discussion on this policy? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Recommend approval of Policy 119, Critical Events, Controversial Issues.
I'll pass this one.
Some more.
Second.
We have a motion on the second. Discussion? This, we already have the discussion. All right, let's have a roll call on this one.
Mr. Brooks?
No.
Mr. Brown?
No.
Ms. Carl?
No.
Ms. Davis?
No.
Mr. D. Francesco?
Yes.
Mr. Gola?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson? Mr. Lynch?
I'm no.
Mr. Valeski?
I'm no.
Motion fails?
Yep, second to two.
Item C, recommend approval of Policy 23, 236.1, Threat Assessment.
Some more. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion on the second. No discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Policy 333, Professional Development, recommending that policy?
On behalf of the committee, I make that recommendation.
Second. We have a motion on the second, and discussions? No discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Recommend approval of Policy 816, Social Media?
On behalf of the committee, I make this recommendation.
Second. We have a motion on the second. Discussion on this policy? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No objections? No objection? Motion's approved.
Recommend approval of Policy 903, Public Participation in Board Meetings?
On behalf of the committee, I make this recommendation.
Second. We have a motion on the second. Discussion?
Did we take out that five-minute for the...
We did. That, that modification was made.
So, did you get the five minutes?
If you registered prior, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so if you registered prior, you get five minutes, but if you would like to come up at the end of the meeting, and you're not registered, you have two minutes.
Okay.
Any further discussions? Questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any objections? No objections? Motion approved.
Thank you. Safe Schools Committee, Mr. Brown, Chairman. We've had some discussions, nothing that needs action at this time. Crawford County Career and Technology Center, report, Mr. Johnson.
At the last meeting, they pointed out two articles that's attributed in on the career center, and the administrator said 100% employment of the graduates, which was pretty phenomenal. There were three students that got apprenticeships to start and told to die here in Meadville, I'm assuming it was their senior year, they were going out, starting their career as an apprentice. The culinary class showed off their techniques and did the meal for everybody that was in the building at night, did a pretty good job. They're going through a rebranding for the career center. Ainsworth is funding this, it's not something to do with the taxpayers' dollars, it's all through them, and they're getting close to completion of it. I'm sure before the end of the school year, you'll have that rebranding done. There's going to be a new website as well. One of the things that kind of got me excited this past week or so, driving around, I'm starting to see a lot of signs pop up. We hired a tech graduate. All through Meadville, we're seeing these signs pop up, and that's, that's exciting, and keeping the kids here in the community, making them a productive part of the community, so that I was excited to see all of that.
Thank you. Intermedia, you report, Mr. Brooks?
They're dealing with a lot of the same staffing issues everyone else is, and starting in January, they're going to change their hours to match up school hours more, they'll be from 8 till 3:30.
Thank you. Mr. Goulik, Legislature Report?
I know, I'm down.
All right, I appreciate that. Under new business, I obviously have added, we talked about three different options for school board meetings, just for the, for the board's consideration, certainly there can be a fourth, fifth, or sixth option, but we'll set those board meetings at the reorganization meeting. One announcement regarding the reorganization meeting, we'll make sure that it's advertised, is that the reorganization and work session meeting on December 2nd will be canceled. We will have one meeting in the month of December, it will be December 9th, and we'll do our reorganization meeting first, and then we will have a voting meeting after that. So, that was my announcement. Remember Mark's.
Okay, Board Members, remarks?
Hey, Luigi, since it's Bob's last day, or last meeting, why don't we get, let him go last?
You want him to go last?
Yeah, let him go last.
Sure, why not?
He can have the last word today.
Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
Last meeting, last word.
Very appropriate, Tim, thank you.
If you don't mind, I don't care. You always get to go first, don't you?
I know, I always wondered why. Best-looking guy goes first, I guess, or person.
I've never gone first.
No. Go ahead.
Thank you, maybe. Well, good evening, and thank you, everybody, for coming, and I do want to say, Bob, thank you very much for your years of service. I know it's been challenging, and you've shown your passion for the students' impact craft, and I want to thank you. I appreciate it. Second off, I'd like to thank all our vets and their families for all their sacrifices, and everything they do to keep us safe, and it's truly appreciated. I, I had a lot of thought about where we're at with our community, and things that are going on, and I thought maybe this month I'd do something a little different. I have some challenges for all of us. With the holidays coming soon, I'm challenging all of us to share. If you know someone in need of help, a family, friend, anybody, let's be a community of service, and let's help those people out this season. Second, I recently saw a study stating that the average adult is on social media 17 times a day. Kids under 18, it was double that. I was actually quite shocked about that. But then I look at the way our country's going today, and the way things are going, and it kind of makes sense. So, I'm challenging everybody for the holiday season, let's put their social media down, let's spend time with their kids, spouses, even if we don't like them, and friends, neighbors, and even spend some time in prayer. Let's, let's reflect this holiday season, and let's tie it back to the values that we were instilled. Third thing is, I've had several people this year with honest complaints, students, parents, teachers, and the one thing that everybody said to me was, I don't want to be that person, and I've always just went along with it. But I realized something, until we see effective change, it's time we are those people. It's time, if you have something to say, let's speak out, but let's do it with respect, not anger. Students, you have just as much rights to say anything, say something as anybody else. I will always have your back, but please, always show respect. You'll get way more out of life if you do it that way. Majority of our staff, they're the best, and we should embrace them. Thank you from the bottom of my heart for all you do. I want to say happy Thanksgiving, and to all our members, good luck, and be safe. That's it.
I want to say to our veterans, thank you for your service, and I'm sure a lot of them have friends that never came home, some of them, the people that ever did come back, just think about them. We have a few veterans on the board here, and some of us were in combat situations. Mr. Brooks, I appreciate the things that you went through, you know, glad you came home. I don't know how many friends you did or didn't come home with. I haven't been in the position that you have, and I served eight years, but I don't want to ship, I wasn't in a combat situation like you, so we have our differences here, but I want you to know, I do appreciate what you went through. I wanted to say thanks to the local businesses that have been hiring our VOTech students. I went to VOTech, and I thought it was a good program, and helped me out later in life. We have a problem with bullying in our schools still, and anything I can say is our students need to speak up and tell fellow teachers, if the teacher isn't responding to your complaints, you just need to go to either another teacher, or go to the head office. Got to get a handle on this, the only way to do it is to speak up, really. It's really all I have to say, happy Thanksgiving, good night.
I don't have anything too new to say from what they said, but on veterans, they have been thinking about it a decent amount today, and I think that's a holiday that we overlook way too easily. Definitely guilty of this, but yeah, it's so important to recognize and remember that people fought and died for this country, and that we owe a lot to that. And it's just something that's been on my mind a lot today, more than most veteran days, but that's it.
I think a lot of it's already been covered. Just a couple of things I'd like to add, along with Mr. Brown's challenges. I would just like to encourage and speak from my heart, from the area that I was raised to moving here about 10 years ago, I fell in love with this area, and I look at social media only 17 times a day, and I see, you know, where my sister is, and where my mother is, and where my nieces and nephews are going to school, and even though I leave these meetings frustrated, and I'm angry, and sometimes hurt, we are still a community that I am very proud to be a part of, and I would just like to ask all of us to continue to come together and continue respectful conversations, and yeah, we have, we have some things that we need to work out, but I really believe that if everyone keeps their minds focused on what's important for our children, continue to guide our children, I'm hopeful that we can get through this and continue to be the community that is the impact. And I, I just want to say how proud I am to still be here. And of course, I have to mention our marching band at Maplewood because we always mention the sports teams, and I'm proud of all of them in coming through this season, but I did want to mention how proud I am of our 17-piece Maplewood marching band. Small but mighty that they are, they just finished their season at championships, they took first place, so this is something they continue to do, and if you ever go to a band competition, which I would really encourage everyone to do at least once, it's pretty amazing to see the field filled up with larger bands that maybe don't have the same commitment that Maplewood does, and then our tiny little band comes out, and it just silence, it just blows everybody away. So, I'm just really proud of them, and I just want to say that. That's it for me.
Thank you. Ms. Bro, would you like to start?
Thanks. Yep, so, again, just wanted on this Veterans Day, to thank those of you that have served, those that are still serving, we have a lot of family that are in different branches of the military. It really is, you know, your service is such an honorable thing, and as David already mentioned, I mean, there's, words aren't enough, and it's just, you know, it really humbles me that I get to live in this great country because of what you men and women have done, and it's fabulous, and it's, you know, it's, it's just, it's humbling, so I do truly appreciate that, and you know, God bless you guys and your families. Then as, the next thing that I wanted to mention, I know that Patty Healy already did a presentation, but as a parent representative, I was able to attend the Advisory Council Committee meeting, which was presented about the, all the things that we're doing for our kids, both in the elementary school and in the high school, and it just, it blew me away. And I know Dr. Glossel mentioned it, but it just, if you have a chance to be involved and see what, what is happening in our schools, it's, I'm telling you, it was, it was amazing. In the past several evenings, my youngest son has brought home his little JA in business, and, and we're going through the questions, and he's asking a lot of great questions, like, how does the credit card work, and how do you write a check, and what does that mean, where does the money come from? And it's, it's just, I don't know, for a parent, you know, when, when we always say we want to teach real-world things, this is real-world stuff. You know, he's learning the difference between a debit card and a credit card and a checkbook, and I'm just thrilled that we have that opportunity to teach our kids these things. Tomorrow, he gets to interview, and he already told me he wants to wear a tie, so I'm like, okay. So, he gets to interview for the job at the Biz Town, and he, I don't remember the date they go, sometime in December. But just, you know, kudos to the guidance counselors, to the teachers, to the district for putting this on, I mean, and they do so much more just with the elementary, but also with the high school, it's just, it's great, and I am really super proud of what they're doing with our kids, and I'm so grateful, because that's what our district is about always, about getting these kids ready to be great citizens, to either go to college or have a career, or go to the VOTech, or whatever it is, you know, and be productive citizens, and it's super exciting to watch my fifth grader, you know, learn about this stuff, which it's just, it's better than college. which it's just, it's better than common, I'm sorry. I put out. Because it really is awesome. So thank you, Patty, and you know, your crew and Dr. Glasspool for that. And the last thing I want to say is, thank you to the Penn Crest voters. You did vote me in for the next four-year term, so I'm sure that'll be next month. But also to mention Mark Giroux. I had the honor and privilege to serve with him. And this board was so gracious to vote me back onto the board to finish out the four months that he left behind. And I am grateful for that. I do appreciate that. It is an honor and a privilege to be able to serve on the school board. But just to mention Mark and, you know, wish him the best and his family, because he served on this district's school board for, I don't know, it was years, was years. So, but thank you for allowing me to serve out this four months and the next month I'll, you know, be sworn in again. So thank you, and happy Thanksgiving.
I'd like to also thank all the veterans present, past, those that sacrificed all. My oldest son was one that gave his life for this country. Veterans Day is very near and dear to my family, to several of my family members. And I thank all of you for your service. They're what allowed us to live free in this country, and we owe them a debt of gratitude that we can't overpay. Also like to speak on the bullying. We're seeing an uptick in it. A lot of that I attribute to this virus that we've had. It's changed our whole environment in the school. But I would like to reach out to the parents because the kids had to pick this up somewhere. I don't know if it came from home or where it came from, but we need the parents to reach out to their kids. My granddaughter endured this racial bullying for three or four years here. And we're, we have a zero tolerance. We're moving forward to strengthen that. But we want to reach out to the parents, know what your kids are doing. Some of the ones that were involved, my granddaughter, the parents had no idea what the child was doing. And on one occasion, both mom and dad wrote a letter of apology to my granddaughter. So we need to reach out to the parents and have them be mindful of what their kids are doing. The other thing, somebody had reached out to me on our critical race theory and sent me a couple of verses from the Bible. The first one was Galatians 3:28-29. "There is neither Jew nor Greek, slave nor free, male nor female; for you were all one in Christ Jesus." The second verse was, "For all have sinned," in parentheses, "not just one race, who have all fallen short of the glory of God." And the third verse says, "I urge you brothers and sisters to watch out for those who cause divisions. Keep away from them, Romans 16, 17." It's been a hot topic, and we're continuing to work on it. And we've got a lot of work to do. Lastly, I'd like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and enjoy your holidays. Like Tim said, put the phones down and enjoy the family.
Thank you, Bob.
Congratulations to our fall sports athletes. I think we had two cross-country placers. Our first, Sagertown's first female cross-country state placer. We had all three schools make the playoffs for football and volleyball. Sagertown for the first time in ten years, so great job to them. Recently, our girls wrestling started with a dip into the preseason tournaments, and all three of the entrants came home with medals. And we just had a, an athlete here at Cambridge sign a scholarship to go play softball. So congratulations to all those students, and get ready for winter sports, because that is starting up here on the nineteenth. First practice on a Friday. I'm not sure exactly what the PIWA is thinking on that, but they know best. We spent five months working on a policy for CRT, and we couldn't find one that legally does what everybody wants it to do. I'm hoping going forward that that's not the sole focus of our board, that we look at what's going on in our schools and work on what's happening with the kids. And we've seen upticks in anxiety and depression. Bob said we're having upticks in racial incidences, homophobic incidences, things like that in our schools. Kids are having difficulty transitioning back to school. Parents are having difficulty transitioning back to school. Staffing problems at every level. Absenteeism at every level. We're implementing a new ESL curriculum. We're developing a new math curriculum. Now, these are the things the board needs to spend more of our time on to make sure that we're implementing what we're saying. I think that's going to address the CRT concerns more than any policy. It's just making sure that our educational leaders and our teachers are all on the same page and everybody is working towards making our kids the priority and not the board the priority. This is the second year in a row that we not have a Veterans Ceremony at Sagertown due to COVID. I think that that ceremony is one of my favorites for a variety of reasons. Not least of which is the community comes into the school. I think that with COVID and everybody being at home and being separate, that we forget how important the schools are to our communities. And when you sit there in a school with K through 12, surrounding the veterans in our schools, it really is a special moment. And I think that's something that we're missing, is how we're all more connected than we are different. There's a variety of reasons we can all find to fight against each other. But we need to keep the focus on public education and moving forward the best we can for our students. And that's what I hope we do going forward. I did pick up today, sorry to any of the other veterans didn't happen to stop at Sagertown randomly today. The Young Conservatives Club gave me a flag and a sticker, so thank you to them. And lastly, my least, I'm Bob. Thank you for your service. When Bob is not on the board next month, we'll not have an educator on the board. It'll be the first time in a long time that we haven't had anyone that's had any classroom experience on the board. And I think that that's something that's important. I'd spent one semester inside of a classroom when I was going to school. And it was enough that I'm not in the classroom anymore. So it's easy to judge from the outside how easy it is to be a teacher, but unless you've actually done it, it's really, it's impressive. And happy Veterans Day to everyone. Something Brian said, I just want to just kind of touch a little bit on it, is when you join the military, you don't get to pick where you go or what you do. You go where you're told and you do what you're told. There's no one service that is more or less valuable than anyone else. So happy Veterans Day to everyone that served. I've talked an awful long time. You'd think it was my last meeting, and I know some people wish it was. But we'll pass it on to Bob.
Well, first of all, Jeff, if you need a consultant that's a former educator, I'm personally, I could be a paid consultant.
I get enough feedback from consultants out there.
Okay. Where do I begin? I won't keep you long, I promise. I just want to thank everyone who's supported me over the last four years, whether it was voting for me or words of encouragement or whatever anybody did to support me. I really appreciate that. I want to thank these gentlemen for their kind words. And I want to thank everybody that I've served with, because, believe it or not, we like and respect each other. You might not know it sometimes when we're talking back and forth here, myself included. But I do respect everybody that I have served with and appreciate their inputs. Sometimes, like I said, we don't agree. But when you're passionate about something and somebody else is passionate about a different idea, you know, it causes disagreements, and that's where we were at a few times, maybe several times. But again, for the third time, thank you, everybody, for working with me, accepting me, and thanks for all you do for the very low pay that you give. I guess the other thing is that I would like to congratulate all the new members. Teresa, Mrs. Bro. And the other, the other successful candidates, Bob and I believe Mr. Bro. And I want to wish them well. And I hope they continue the great tradition at Penn Crest, as Jeff said, of working for the students. That's why I got on the board, and I'm very pleased that I could do that for four years. I'm sure Dr. Glasspool will keep the ship going in the right direction and as well as all the other administration. They've been wonderful to me and, excuse me, to all the board members. They're very on top of everything. We have questions, comments, concerns, they're right there to answer them. So I can't say enough good things about Penn Crest. Hopefully, we can keep going in the right direction, and the new board will keep us going that way. One more thing, and I'll let you go. I'm probably the only one that's home at noon, because everybody works. So today, on Channel 24 News at Noon, they had a really nice piece on a young lady by the name of Melissa Clayton. She is a senior female football player for the Sagertown Panthers. And they did a really nice piece on her. They might rerun it at 11 with people that are here. I think their website is youreree.com, and it's probably archived on there for the people at home if you'd like to look it up and check it out. It was very good. So again, thank you, everybody, and have a happy Thanksgiving. I'm done.
Thank you.
Literally. New mic drop.
Today's Veterans Day, and the one thing I would like to emphasize and have a lot of people be aware of, that my generation was a generation that always answered to the law of the land. In other words, all my generation were drafted. Ever since after the Vietnam War, things changed. Ever since then, we have a volunteer army. And I respected these volunteers that are willing to join and follow the American tradition to keep us safe. And the reason I'm concerned is they deserve more credit, all these volunteers, that they go there and put their lives right in the front line. And unfortunately, it happened recently in Afghanistan. We lost, what, about thirteen young men. It was a terrible salary.
There was a female that died.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, that's the casualty of war. And we hope that because they all volunteer, you know, our leaders in the, will finally quit in making wars that we really don't need. Our country comes first, and that's where the lies of these young men are, that they aren't your volunteers. And I always say volunteers, because they deserve the best respect that ever America should have towards these people. And I'm sure that we have some veterans over here that were volunteer. I can't say that for myself, but to me, I was drafted when I was only two years, two years in this country. It was a learning experience. And I learned to appreciate this country, and I still do. And what's happened nowadays is a high concern in my mind. America is a lot too old for everybody, regardless of race, color, creed, and sex. As a matter of fact, we have a lot of female volunteers in today's service. I don't know why they will do that, but they're doing it and to perform just as well as any other male soldier. So what I'm saying is, please remember that today's army is more valuable than you ever had before. Because these people never went to Canada, they never got married just to avoid the draft. They're people, they really had a purpose to join. And hopefully, in my mind, that the purpose was to keep this country, United States of America, just as great as always had. America had problems in the past. And the beauty of our system is that problems can be resolved. And they were resolved back in 1800s, 1860. One big problem we had was resolved, but it was resolved with a lot of blood, with a lot of people. And it was over. And through the years, the problem that reappeared in some states was also resolved. And today, I can say, yes, we can do better. But most of the problem's only between individuals, not as a whole. Not as a whole in the population. Unfortunately, we cannot control every individual, because that is not what our country's about, to control. And that brings another topic. We have a government in this state that still plays games with the people's, with the people's fear and tax money. Penn Crest went to court to assure, to assure the legality of the mandate about wearing a mask and forcing the kids to wear masks. Yes, there is a difference of opinion between parents if they should wear a mask or not. But to have a mandate that's not backed up at all is not right. And just remember, these volunteers and our services, they spend a lot of, we spend a lot of blood for other countries to be free and to remove these mandates on people and to force them to do what they don't want to do. So right now, we are in the court to decide that the governor and the acting secretary didn't have the right to issue mandates. And so what happens? Well, they're going to appeal it. They're going to appeal it now while the governor's there. Then in January 17, he was going to remove the mandate. So we're talking about just over a month. Why? Why going through this problem? But locally, we have a good administrators in our districts. Because I am retired, I had the chance to work closely with Mr. Glasspool. He's doing a fine job despite all the, all the pressure that has been having every day to dealing with all kinds of people, the parents, the kids. And I don't know how he did it so far, and he survived. But I'm glad we got him. So in closing, say Thanksgiving is coming. And Thanksgiving is also a holiday remembrance of the hardship our first Americans, of course, they were not Americans yet, but the first settlers endured. So I guess we, right now, we don't have the problem they had back in the days. And we can go to a store and get a turkey. So have a, happy Thanksgiving to all. And we're going to try to do better every day. And thank you, Mr. Glasspool, and all the administrators and all the staff.
Thank you. The board met in executive session on November 8 and November 11 for personnel safety and negotiations. That's all we have.
Motion to adjourn?
Do I motion to adjourn?
Second.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
Jeff, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.